I'd like to call to order the open session of the North Andover School Committee for May
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. What's today? And resume by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so apologize for the tardy resumption. I'd like to start for just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. If you would be so kind as to silence your mobile devices. Fabulous. We'll start this evening with public comment. If there's any public comment on any matters before the school committee. Seeing none, we'll go on to recognition if there is any this evening.
Not tonight.
Going right through it. Our student report. Good evening, Matt.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Fabulous.
How are you doing?
Matt, it's your last official day.
Oh, no.
I can't believe it. I cannot believe how fast these-
Past four years have gone by.
Your last day in school is tomorrow.
It's bitter, bittersweet. Bitter, bittersweet. So, yeah, especially how we're finishing up seniors. We've made it, made it through officially.
Congrats.
And so, a lot of fun activities are coming up for the seniors in the next week and a half. So today, we had a presentation which was very inspirational to all and made a big eye-opener for everyone as well. It was, we had a mock drunk-driving accident representation, and that was just, that was what was put on by the students who played as actors in this, and this was just to show the significant dangers and harm of drunk driving, not only to themselves, but the rumbling impact on everyone else. So that was a very serious matter for all of us to see firsthand. We also had a student, a guest speaker come in who was a student of the class of 2000, Anthony Sideri. He was, talked about his struggle with opiates and alcohol addiction, drug addiction, and his overcoming power, and's overcome all that adversity, and now he's, lives in North Andover, has a family, and he goes around to all the schools, speaks to them about the dangers of opiates and addiction. And so, the fifth, June 5th, we have our senior prom, which is in Boston, so everyone's getting very, the girls are getting stressed out about it.
Does that mean-
What's that? I do, yep. So, yeah, we're all looking forward to that. It's gonna be a great time for everyone, last big go-around with the senior class. And then, for the week after-
Excuse me, when is the, I forget what you call it, the parade? What time is that?
The grand march.
The grand march, thank you.
I don't know the exact time, but my guess would be somewhere around the 4:00 area of that day.
It is one of my daughter's, like, most favorite.
Oh, really?
Oh, my God, she loves it. Every year.
My sister was the same way growing up, because I have so many sisters, they all want to see them, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have prom, the next day we have our, well, I don't know, I don't know the exact order, but we have a clam bake that whole week. We go up to York Beach, have a clam bake, fun time with the class. We also go bowling one day up in Lenfield. And we also have a lot of, we have our scholarship night, which is June 8th, and that will be a big one for all students to see that what they have been honored with throughout the hard work that they put in, in and outside of school in the past four years. And then, graduation's Friday, and that's a wrap for us.
And then SOS?
SOS is the party afterwards, which will be a whole night thing.
It will be memorable.
Yep. It's the substance and alcohol-free zone to keep everyone safe for that night, which I believe is a phenomenal thing.
Yeah. Ongoing tradition for how many years?
A while.
Late 70s?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, it'll be memorable.
Absolutely.
So, my question is, you probably have one more school committee meeting with us, Matt, right? And it's probably, because I don't think you have to come after you graduate. What do you think?
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, like-
So, we have one next week.
Okay.
So, we just want to be clear, if you don't mind joining us for one more week, that would be awesome.
It's my honor.
Awesome.
Fabulous.
And you could do, you could do a year if you need.
I, I'll be more than happy for that.
PowerPoint presentation.
Mr. McDevitt. Come on, he's done.
Excellent. And I assume Courtney's not here this evening?
I do not see her.
Congratulations.
The difference between seniors and juniors right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's still got another month of power through. You can see it in the eyes of the underclassmen there. They're like, "I hate you guys for this."
But they're gonna love the extra parking spots, believe me.
Oh, yeah. They should've seen parking this morning.
It was a little tricky.
Yeah. There's kids parked over the grass and everything, so.
Again, it's been a pleasure having you. We look forward to seeing you on the second, if you choose to, you know, please us with, or join us.
Yeah.
And congratulations, and we wish you well.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to our consent agenda. We have meeting minutes for approval. An entertaining motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
Are you any discussion?
As always, I thought they were accurate and complete. No further conversation, all in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like 5-0, and this was for May 14. Great. On to the chair report. I just have two quick items, and I'll defer some of my time to Mr. Limpert, who was kind enough to represent me on the health advisory meeting for the 18th. You want to give us a quick, quick update on how that was?
I believe, as part of that, I think, I believe that was the last meeting for the year.
Yeah.
Just a wrap-up of many, many, really, very focused and wonderful activities that are going on in our, in our district around a number of different health initiatives, and I was very impressed. I, you know, I, again, I think that's another area where we could use some better publicity to let people know what, really, a lot of the things that are going on in health and wellness, a lot of the initiatives that are going on, you know, and the money we're getting, stipends we're doing, you know, how we're coordinating with the opioid activities and all of that sort of thing. So, I was very impressed. I was very impressed by the, by the group and all the activities that were involved.
Great.
It's very interesting.
Important work, and thank you very much. The other item I wanted to at least mention was, we did have the naming activity for the Alexander P. Farisi Sports Complex last Sunday, or two Sundays ago now.
Two Sundays ago.
Thank you. It was a blustery day, but it was heartfelt outpour from the community. It's now official, and there was a lot of good feedback to the school committee and to the community in general, not only for allowing that facility to be there, but also in the respectful and thoughtful way that the, that the school committee had presented that naming opportunity forward. So, I also want to call on Mr. McDevitt for his specific efforts, and Mr. Limpert for his specific efforts trying to make that happen for, for the community and for the, for the families, so thank you.
And Mr. Nugent.
And Mr. Nugent. Oh, I can't forget Mr. Nugent, and all the things he does, indeed.
If I can just say one thing, I mean, it, it was, as you said, a cold, kind of rainy day, but when Mrs. Farisi got up and spoke, literally, the sun just shone down, and it was amazing. So, it was a very, very amazing day, and there was a great article in the paper, and maybe tweeted something like that, so. Beautiful pictures.
Good publicity.
Indeed. I guess the other comment I was gonna make under the chair is that in executive session, we reviewed, voted, and approved the letter of agreement between North Andover School Committee and the Teachers Association, which essentially describes the job description that was required as part of our stipends for the academic or-
Department coordinators.
Thank you, the department coordinators. We originally structured, restructured some of the stipends in our August memorandum of understanding with the to-do to accept the coordinator job descriptions, which was executed this evening. We'll have a copy of that for the, for the teachers' union as well. So, that's it for the chair report?
Yeah, just two quick things, and then maybe Mr. Gilligan and Mr. Millie have something to add. As you may have heard, it was announced yesterday that North Andover received a AAA rating from Standard and Poor's, which is a really big deal, and that's such a credit to all elected officials here, and also our town manager. It's a, it's a really big deal for our town, so I think it's just something we should be excited about, and really, very appreciative of everyone's hard work. The other thing is, the Special Olympics were yesterday, and it was my first opportunity to be at the Special Olympics, and tweeted out some great photos. Mary Lou had some even better photos, I'll have to say. But what an amazing day. I mean, it was just inspirational, exciting, to see generations of people come together, and it's just such a, yet again, as I enter into this community, I know I'm almost entered, but I haven't done a full year yet, so just to see the traditions and the commitment in the community, it was really a special day. So, and Gilly, did you run the race?
I was supposed to race Lenny Dagnit, but he disappeared right at the right time. But I would say one thing, not only with our Special Olympic athletes, who are completely inspiring, but there's a remarkable woman in the community named Kathy Keith, who's been running the Special Olympics for us, I don't know, at least a decade, or close to it, and this was her last year. So, there's someone new taking over, I can't quite remember-
We've been told it's all fine, she's got it all planned.
She's got it all planned, and I'm sure she'll be around next year, but I think just a shout-out to her, because she's an incredible human being, and the effort it takes to put that together, and the volunteer efforts by all the PE teachers, wellness teachers in North Andover, and especially the high school volunteers and the elementary students who came from other schools to cheer on our student athletes was awesome.
Fabulous.
Great. So, anything else that I missed? Gentlemen?
Just a notification for transportation. The message went out today for all parents to know that we're taking in the fee for next year. If they pay before July 1, it's $330, and as it has been in the past, after July 1, it's $360. So, the fee stays the same. So, that went out today, and if anyone has questions, they can call either me or Lucy McCarthy, our transportation coordinator.
Great. Okay.
Well, your adventures on the bus the other day with transportation were pretty commendable.
That was only, so we had a tree down on Great Pond Road, and the buses were all in trouble, and it had nothing to do with me, Mr. Gilligan. It was the Gilligan factor, so we got to a bunch of cones where everybody else, people were not allowed to pass, but you just throw Mr. Gilligan up there to talk to anybody, and so then, of course, the bus is getting a police escort down the road, so it was really, thank you, Gilly. So, we got everyone home safe and sound, but ride, I got to ride the bus with Mr. Cushing. It was fun.
Wow. And walk the kids to their doorsteps.
And we walked the kids to their doorsteps, and everyone got home safe and sound, but it was, it was my first elementary bus experience, so.
Wow, and you're here to talk about it.
And it was a big tree.
Yeah.
Fabulous.
So, I'm done.
Okay, do you want to take new business first?
I was hoping that, that would be great, if we could, so.
With the committee's indulgence, I'd like to call new business and meet our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
So, Donna, if you wouldn't mind coming and joining us. Before we start, I just wanted to have you look at the committee that was part of this search, and if, just to remind everyone, we had two rounds of this search. One was a Director of Special Education, and then we went back out to look for an Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and I think it was an excellent decision to do so, mostly because we ended up with a fantastic candidate. But the thing, I, before we start, a number of the committee members are actually in the room. We all went out for a bit of a celebratory dinner with Donna before. We're so excited to have her join our staff. But the great thing about this committee was, we had a student, we had parents, we had representations from every level, almost every building, and it was a ton of work, but I think it's fair to say, this is one of those questions that's hard to disagree with, but we had a lot of fun. And we unanimously felt that Donna Straight was the person that would best be a fit for our-
Go, Donna!
As you can tell, joy was the fun in the group, so.
There you go.
So, I present to you Donna Straight, coming to us from Georgetown, but right before that, coming to us from Battle Creek, Michigan. So, we're very excited. We put her through a pretty grueling process, an interview with the committee that was daunting, is that fair to say?
That's quite fair to say.
And then, half a day where she met with parents and staff, and had to look at a redacted IEP, and look at data, and had to spend time with Gilly, Jim, and I walking through classrooms and really talking about instructions, so a quite rigorous process, and you did an excellent job, and we're so excited to have you potentially come on board with their confirmation.
Thank you. Good evening, and, you know, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm really excited, the experience I've had so far here in the district is, it's just such a welcoming community, and I'm just so looking forward to it, having dinner with everybody again this evening. I just can't wait to get started here. I feel a member of the community already.
You can take him to the airport, we take him.
So, we went to Orzo's, because it was actually this place I ate dinner before my first interview here in North Andover, and that turned out well, so I thought we shouldn't mess with the mode.
Good tradition. Indeed. You certainly come highly recommended, highly qualified, and if you were able to put smiling faces on the people behind you, you know, it's very hard to argue. I noticed you were a software developer at Deck?
I was, yes.
That's a sample of business.
It's aging me just a little bit there, saying I worked at Deck, but, yes, that's, that was my first career.
Very cool.
We'd have to explain to our studies what Deck is, right?
Yes, yes.
Company that used to exist, right?
Indeed.
Exactly.
Now, can you tell us a little bit about your experience in Michigan?
Sure. I worked in Battle Creek, Michigan, which you may recognize on your cereal boxes, which is where Kellogg's and Post is, and interesting little story is, you can walk out of your office some days at your home, and you know exactly what they're cooking by the smell in the air, you know? Cocoa pebbles, or something like that, but I was the Director of Student Services for Battle Creek, Michigan, which was an urban environment.
How big was that district?
There was about 15,000 students there, so it was a large district, three high schools, we had five middle schools, 14 elementary schools. Yeah, it was quite large. It was a wonderful environment, great people to work with.
So, it's going from that size to Georgetown, which is-
Yes, so that was Georgetown's actually the smallest place I've ever worked, and what I've discovered is, I really do enjoy that larger environment, where there's lots of people to really collaborate with, solve problems with, really kind of look at things and have those conversations.
So, are we, are we big enough for you?
You are. You're just right.
That's a good answer. You already have a job.
We're good.
Any other questions?
So, I, I think your resume is absolutely fantastic, and, you know, I think there's a lot of great things that, you know, you bring to the table in terms of just opportunities and kind of exploring additional things out there. I'm just wondering if you could just talk a little bit about, I see, you know, applying for, for some of the grants, both at the federal and the state level, and just wondering, as we kind of start, and I think you start July 1, in order to kind of be sure that we're, you know, in process for any of those, is that putting any time restraints on our availability to apply for things, or is that something that we can start to do in advance? I just, timing-wise, I'm just not sure how that falls.
Right, so my hope is, after this evening, I'll be able to kind of start doing some transition work with the current district staff, as well as the current sitting Director of Special Education, just really to have an understanding of what your overall district goals are, what does your strategic plan look like for special education, and really looking at those grants and developing them appropriately to coincide with the initiatives that you're starting with. So, we still have time, even, you know, if I wasn't to start till July 1st, we have time to get those written, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
More than anything, I wanted to make sure we kind of didn't lose any because of a transition of staff.
So, the biggest one is Circuit Breaker, which is the big state reimbursement. I talked to LeAnn today, and that is basically done. She has one more training to go to, so we're working really hard on making sure. We also have a coordinated program review mid-cycle, there are eight files we have to pull, she's already pulled them, so we've already worked. The other good thing is Donna and LeAnn know each other. I think, actually, I want to be transparent, that LeAnn was actually very helpful in recruiting Donna to our district.
That's true.
So, I feel like that's gonna be a seamless transition in terms of working together.
Absolutely.
And Donna has also, although she has not yet confirmed, we are in the process of interviews for our new Special Education Administrator at the middle school, and she spent yesterday morning with us as part of that hiring process, so really trying to get her involved. And at the end, I'm gonna hand her a job description to look at for a new position, so, you know, we're not gonna even let her leave here without more work, so.
And I do have one other question as well, so NAIPAC is a really big part of the community and involvement, and I'm just wondering, in your involvement in Georgetown and then in the city of Battle Creek, I mean, have, has that been something that has already been established? Is that been a part of your interaction with the community and the parents?
Absolutely. I would meet monthly with the CPAC president, attend to all of the CPAC meetings, with the exception of the CPAC meeting that discussed the law, because they prefer to do that, you know, on their own.
Okay.
Pulling in some of my staff to do presentations, working with the community, going out to their activities, trying to connect them with the ARC and some of the other local districts so that we can collaborate and increase the capacity to do presentations and work with families.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just one more question.
Sure.
From all the discussions you've had and the very detailed information, what do you see being the two or three opportunities we have, just kind of at first blush, to make some changes or head in a different direction, or things you'd like to see us take over?
I think, based on my conversations with the staff and just kind of looking at your data, I think some of the areas might be looking at, you know, how we can fully integrate some of these students and really meet their specific needs in regards to some of the social-emotional situations that we know is popping up everywhere, and really embracing our students and working with them so they can develop some appropriate strategies, as well as looking at some of the language-based concerns that some people have, and how can we really build that capacity within our own staff to support those students.
I felt very fortunate I got to meet you quickly when you met with the NAIPAC group, and so I'm very happy to have you here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And congratulations, I understand you're new to the committee. Yeah, I am new.
She's done her homework.
No, I think Dr. Price put together a great search committee, and if these folks unanimously think that you are the person of the job, I will happily go to approve your contract.
Thank you.
Great, so with that, I entertain a motion to confirm Dr. Straight as the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Second. Uh, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, great. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited.
Thank you for your first job, there you go.
This is a sign, though, we're likely going to go back to executive session after this meeting, I believe, to complete the deliberations on, on the contract.
On the contract, so, yes. Okay.
Very good.
You all feel free, if you so desire. I really want to, again, thank the committee, they came here tonight also to support her, so.
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah. And her daughter came.
Hello.
Isn't that exciting?
Thank you, Ashley.
She is excited.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
All right, jumping back to old business, let's see, we have, yeah, would you want to take the tuition change for ECC first?
That'd be great, so Mary Lou can go.
Stay here. You're going to the party.
You're obsessed.
Right.
So, let's, let's jump to, blah, 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 blah.
B.
NB, thank you, you guys are faster than I am. So, we, this is the second reading, the proposed tuition change. I know there was a request to review this and approve it after moving the, or requests to waive the, waive the policy, but we did want to give the community time to react and respond. To date, I've heard nothing.
Nor have I.
Has any committee member heard anything?
Nope.
Anything in the central office, or anything at, at the Early Childhood Center?
No, I just get the general questions from the waiting list, and I've kept them pretty updated throughout the year, so I'll continue to do stuff.
So, it's no big shock to them what's potentially coming?
No, I, no, because I've done-
Come to the microphone.
Please.
So, the folks at home.
Step into our office, yeah. Where the camera can zoom right in.
No, I, I really haven't heard anything different. I mean, they know that we were proposing these programs, as I mentioned before, we surveyed them, as far as, you know, how many slots, and who gets slots, and things like that. The waiting list is pretty aware that, you know, when we get an opening, we fill it with, right off of the waiting list. So, I was able to just accept a large amount of children off the waiting list, and told them that the specific programming would be, more information would follow after we decide on prices and everything.
Okay, so just, just to summarize, this is to increase the half-day to 3200, sorry, from 32 to 4, from 32 to 42.
To include lunch, though.
And to include lunch, and then the full day from 3200 to 52, including lunch.
Correct, yeah, and I just want to make sure parents know, if they are watching, that the half-day program cost is not increasing, it's still 320 a month, 3200 a year.
And it's staying the same, basically?
It's staying the same.
Okay, so it's just-
Yeah, so I don't want any confusion for the half-day parents.
Thank you.
So, can you, so, if they don't stay for lunch, it's still 32. If they choose to stay for lunch?
Well, they won't actually choose, so these kids will be predetermined-
Join that group.
-based on when we get the openings and who gets the openings, so in September, the children, the parents will know if they're in the lunch-bunch program or not.
But they are not, just to be clear, Mary Lou, the parents will say they want their kids to be in the lunch-bunch program.
Oh, correct, yeah.
Right, so, what she's trying to say is, there's probably gonna be more people who want it than get chosen.
Okay.
And I do, every time a parent moves, or a child goes out of our program, even right up through May, we continue to enroll students. So, if they don't get in right away, they may get an opening later, if somebody moves or that.
So, there's really three offerings, there's really the half-day, the half-day with the lunch, and then the full day.
Correct.
Four days.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Now that I, now that we totally butchered that.
No, it doesn't, it's, I didn't realize, and this is, what, what you clarified for me is that the-
The half-day.
There was still the half-day option.
Yes, half-day and no lunch, as is.
Right.
Great, any other, well, actually, we should probably call for the, for the motion first. Is there a motion to approve the tuition as presented in the packet?
So moved.
Second. Great, any further conversation? Nope, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all abstained, great, 5-0. Thanks for putting up the seat.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
Great, on to the meat of the meeting. It's time to review and approve the superintendent evaluation, and I know this is in our packets as draft. Let me describe a little bit of the process we used to get here. the process we used to get here, in addition to using the D E S C template format and policy and procedures, each of the school committee members had individually provided an evaluation based on their criteria for each of the assessment towards goals, assessment towards standards, and then the summative evaluation. What I did was I received all the feedback from each individual and basically put it into a common document, you can see the ratings and the comments are indicated by each person's initials, and for the most part, I was amazed at how consistent the feedback and the ratings were, which in past years we hadn't necessarily as a group using a similar process gotten to the same consensus. What I'd like to do is give each committee member an opportunity to reflect on the information and, you know, provide any comment to this document, which will become public record. At the end of the review, we will have to vote to approve this, and then finally, I'd like to ask Dr. Price to reflect on what she has seen for any follow-up or any clarifying questions, if that's reasonable.
Great.
Is that a reasonable process to go through? Okay, so who would like to begin with a brief review of the areas that were most...
Why don't I do that since I did it a little differently from the rest of the group? So first, I'd like to say that I think Dr. Price is doing a spectacular job, I'm thrilled that she's here and frankly, she's the main reason why I was interested in even running to join the school committee. I put a lot of thought into this, as I know we all did, and I also took to heart a sentence in here under the indicators, which is actually on page two, if anybody wants to look back at it, where it says, "For new superintendents, performance is on track to achieve proficiency within three years under the Needs Improvement slash Developing." So I really use that column a lot more than other people did, primarily because I feel that some of the questions we were asked to reflect on and answer are, would have been impossible to achieve in ten months, eleven months of employment, so not in any area am I concerned about what's happening, I just think that some of them are not completed yet, not because of Dr. Price, just simply we do not have the curriculum in place because that takes time. And I think that we have the right person in place to do it and the right plans are already underway, and I, I'm very happy with everything that Dr. Price is doing.
Great, that makes perfect sense, in the sense that we each individually had to interpret the rubric and the criteria, and that makes perfect sense. Thank you. Mr. Tracy.
Thank you. Just dovetailing on Ms. Mably's comments, I absolutely agree with her that I believe we chose the right person, a year and a half ago now?
Forever.
It seems like yesterday. It seems like yesterday. I think, especially from my perspective, the things that I could measure as a school committee member, you know, the community engagement, the visibility has been outstanding, the comments from school folks as well as town folks, you've been very engaging and you've quickly become a member of the community. I think I have a little same frustration with, as Ms. Mably is, you know, we have this rubric, this evaluation form.
It's a statewide form, too.
Yeah, and it's ridiculous because I don't know as a school committee member how I can judge your future evaluation skills, we're not in the classroom, we don't, we don't see that kind of stuff, there are parts of this, this evaluation form that I think, you know, unless we want to get to the, really get into the weeds and start interviewing teachers and principals, which I don't think that's our role as a school committee member anyway, so I just think we should just maybe find another evaluation form, but that's another, another issue altogether. But just in closing, I really think that you've done a spectacular job and I really look forward to working with you over the next, next few years as well.
Thank you, Tracy.
So, so, he be praised, is that, we're gonna, that's, we're gonna, you know, it's all been going really well, I think the one thing that really stood out to me when I did it this time, went through this, this process this time is a couple of things, first is I went back and I did try to really use the rubrics for the indicators, right, and the rubrics in some ways aren't, aren't very helpful because the, all the needs improvement stuff is really needing improvement, so, you know, you don't fit into any of those categories as far as I can tell. And the exemplary stuff really doesn't help much because it's more like just due proficient, but a lot more of it, so that's not too helpful either, so I think, to your point, Mr. Tracy, I think we can go through next time before we start the process and decide, there are just selected areas we want to look at, we don't have to look at everything if we don't want to, so we can pick out one or two of these things in the four categories and do that, and sort of concentrate on something, which we've done in the past successfully, and I think that was, I think that turned out well. The other thing that I really noticed when I was doing this is, when I looked at the three areas that we judged against your goals, the challenge there was, we didn't invent our own rubric, right? So the consistency there is going to be like, well, who knows what, because we were all thinking whatever we were thinking, right? And I think that might be something that we would want to discuss going forward next time, so when we get to the goals in these areas, let's start thinking about, not detail, but something generally, what is a really good performance going to look like, you know? So I think that might be helpful for all of us, so down the road we'll know, I think it all, it all went really well, and I, you know, I would agree with Ms. Mably, you know, you made remarkable progress, you know, there's stuff in the works, we're still working on a bunch of stuff, but it's going, it's going great, and I think, to me, to echo Mr. Tracy's comment, certainly visibility and communications, who could fault you for that? But the other thing is, I think there's a number of really significant initiatives that you've gotten started that I think are going to really do well for all of us, and the other thing I wanted to, I really wanted to point out is I think, because this has been a big deal for us for a number of years now, I think this, this budget that you put together was the best budget we've had since I've been on the school committee. So I would certainly give you major chops for that, and I think that was an area that really stood out to me is, when I went and I went back and I looked at the, the rubric for that, you certainly met the highest category in that area, so I, I think you did an outstanding job in that one particular area, so.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McDevitt. So Devin?
Okay. I think the first thing that, when we were, when Mr. Gross and I went down to, actually, you went down with us as well, down to Newton Door, and everybody that we met with just said, "You're going to love her, you're just really going to love working with her and you're going to love how she thinks," and I thought, I didn't think they were trying to get rid of you, but, you know.
Who knows?
But I know, but how true that has been, and it has been very open, it has been very collaborative, and that has been just, there's always a nervousness about that when somebody new kind of comes in, I think everybody in the community feels that way as well, and I think that that's really important to us. As I went through the documentation and all of the supporting materials that were there, it wasn't something that was thrown together, I know, you know, in a professional world sometimes I'll do my evaluation like two nights before it's due, or the day it's due, I mean, this has really been something that you have paid a significant amount of attention to, and I think in view of the amount of work that can be done, you know, kind of building and putting all of this stuff together certainly has taken a significant amount of time, and I, and I think Bev has been a great help in helping to compile all of that information for you, so I really want to thank you for doing all of that and making that part of the process as easy as it was for us to review. I said it in my notes as well, but I certainly want to say this publicly, with every conversation that I've had with you, that we've had with, in the school committee, you know, wherever, your number one focus is always what is right for the kids, what is right for our students, you know, I've heard you say, "It just makes sense, we need to do this, this is the right thing to do," and as a, as a parent and a member of the community, that's just exactly what we want to hear, and so I thank you for that. You think outside the box, which, you know, it would be very easy to come in and just say, you know, "I'm going to spend a year observing and seeing where things are, and then I'm going to try to start to move the district and make those changes." I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I think that you started to move things on July 2nd. Close, was it the first?
No, it wasn't the first.
But I think you started looking at things and really saying where we were going to move things and how things were going to happen, and it actually was probably before that when you hired Mr. Raymond as principal of the Thompson School, just making sure where that has been. And so I think that that has, that could have been a very easy just sit, I don't mean to say sit back, but really kind of just observe, and I think, you know, when we look at students and the opportunities that they have, they've got one shot at second grade, they've got one shot at being a junior in high school and trying to make that year, not a stagnant year from any perspective, and that's just exactly what I think we look for. And I think the last thing that I want to say is, you know, I know coming into this, and I'm not going to say it was any form of a reservation per se, but, you know, you certainly had all of your experience kind of at the high school level, and that has been a significant part of your life, and so working with the elementary and the middle school and the ECC has really been a place that your presence has been felt, you have certainly put a lot of time and attention and effort and all of that, and I think it would have been easy to come back and kind of again say, you know, "All right, we're going to do some stuff at the high school," and I'm not going to say that you haven't made changes there, but I think you've really gone above and beyond with the elementaries and the ECC and the middle school to not only just learn and understand where that is, but to really have an impact there, and, you know, I think it starts there and it builds, so I think that focus was spot on, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. So for me, not to belabor the point, yes, you exceeded far and beyond what I think mere mortals could have done in ten months, and in some spaces you far exceeded capabilities for, you know, what seasoned superintendents have done with this district, so that should go, that should not go unnoticed. Frankly, I was a little concerned that you took on too much, but after reviewing the artifacts and reviewing the feedback received both in the survey, even from union representation this evening, you were very proactive, you were very eager to resolve issues before they become issues, and as Mr. McDevitt indicated, your focus is truly on the students, the teaching, and the learning that's going on in district. It's been absolute pleasure being chair this year, on this, on this one year, for the, the activities that have been delivered, you're clearly the voice in the face of North Andover education, I really hope you, you continue to be that, I know how much difficult, how much difficulty that creates, you know, being here, and again, the win-win solutions that you come up with, the collaboration with the town manager and the municipal side, excuse me, and the, the ability to, to think both not only tactical for the, for the quick wins and improvements, but also strategic, things that we really need to focus on, things that we will be including in discussion moving forward, has really been a breath of fresh air, so in summary, there's no question that the price is right, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was that the worst time?
So the, the only, the only item that I'd just like to put out for brief correction, the intent of the highlighting in this document was where there was majority for the ratings, and I think a few of the highlighting elements disappeared, but the intent here is that if there was majority or higher, that was the committee's assessment, and at this point everything is proficient, and there are several exemplaries, including communication, that this team has, has committed to.
Just, sort of, the price is... All day we've got. One comment I wanted to make, Dr. Price, is that I didn't think about it much until you had been here for a few months. Our last three superintendents were people in completely different places in their careers, and you're a person that has perspective that I think is really exciting for us, you know, you're a parent with students in school now.
Yeah.
As well as being of an age where, you know, you're still ready to do it, right? I think you have a lot of energy, it's not like a been there, done that kind of thing, so, you know, that's been dramatic, I, I didn't think much about that at the time, but it's been a pretty big deal. The other thing that I think's interesting is, you know, there's a little bit of a question about, well, you're hiring a principal to be a superintendent, is that going to work out, how's that going to work out? And I don't think that question's ever come up again, I don't think anybody's ever raised that question once, so I think that's been a non-issue as far as that's all about, so, you know, I just really think that, you know, the, what I thought was, was maybe taking on too much is just somebody being more energetic than we were used to. So it's been going great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Comments, reflection?
Yeah, thank you, first of all. You know, nervousness, you talked about that, like it was definitely both ways, you know, I've never been a superintendent before, going to a place, I mean, one of the things that my leadership style relies on is people trusting me, and I had trust within my previous place, and to go to a new place and have to start all over with trust was really scary for me, because if people don't trust me, then my approach to empowerment and support and collaboration doesn't work, and so please know that the nervousness was both ways, and I'm not that nervous anymore, so that's good. Just a few things, I mean, this community has just really embraced me, I mean, town hall, I was almost speechless, I mean, sorry, town meeting, I was almost speechless.
Yeah, I can't remember when there's been a standing ovation.
Yeah, it just, it just felt so embracing, and that is exemplary of how I had been embraced from the moment I arrived, from the staff, I mean, I think Gillian and I were on a scooter within like three days, and Bev Zagari had embraced me from even before I started with the hire of Chris Raymond, and just feeling embraced by all members of the parents and all the people who came out to my coffees last summer, and just, it's been a wonderful and easy, I don't mean to say that it hasn't been work, but it's been so easy to become part of this town, you know, you talked about that David, it's, that there haven't been barriers, I haven't had to kind of, it's just being myself and showing up has really been, so, and then in terms of visibility, you know, the, the secret is that everybody loves that I'm visible, and I love being visible, because I get to have so much fun. So, you know, like, that's the best part, like when I'm out and about, I'm having a blast, I'm playing, I'm doing Legos with kindergarteners, I'm, you know, putting on rubber red noses yesterday at Kittredge, that, and, you know, if I am in my office, I am, my own gas tank is not getting refilled, so the visibility part is actually, everyone says, "Oh, you're all over the place," and part of that is really that it fills my gas tank back up so that I can get back to some of the more kind of paperwork-y or the strategic work of being the superintendent, and I just love that part, so, you know, A, it's great that I'm doing it, but B, I'll just tell you, it's, I love doing it. Amy, the Needs Improvement gap, I would say one of the things is that our teachers struggle with that, and our principals struggle, so the rubric of this rubric is very similar to the teacher rubric, and so one of the things that becomes very challenging is when you look at the Needs Improvement language, it feels like a deficiency rather than an area of growth, and so one of the challenges we have as the evaluators is if a teacher has an area of growth, we want to say it's an area of growth, it's not a deficiency, and so I think one of the things that you can see is that we as evaluators struggle with that gap between Needs Improvement and Proficient, and many of us feel that it is much too wide. And many districts have actually recrafted the language, unfortunately, the state has required us to use the Needs Improvement, so you have to kind of get over that piece of Needs Improvement, but at least we have ability to change the language around growth, and so my hope is, as we work collaboratively with the union this summer to rethink our evaluation instrument, we can have the same conversation that you just had about my evaluation, is that, you know, it feels like it's a chasm between proficient and Needs Improvement, and that shouldn't make sense, I mean, at the end of ten months, there should be a ton of areas that I need to grow, and so, you know, it's, it's actually a really good experience for this committee to have, so as they understand the struggle that we as evaluators have with our teachers, and how teachers feel like, "Well, that language doesn't make me feel like I have an area of growth, it makes me feel like I have an deficiency," and we should understand that complication, so I'm actually kind of, I know it's frustrating, Mr. Tracy, but I'm actually glad you guys went through this, so as we struggle with that with our teachers, you can see what we're dealing with on a daily basis.
Well, even the page before, it says they used the phrase significant progress, why did that get abandoned for the rest of the document?
Right.
Because that's how I was using it.
Correct. And many people say, like, when you look at the goals, did not meet some progress, significant progress, met, exceeded, that's five, and then we go to this unsatisfactory Needs Improvement, proficient exemplary, and exemplary is like, you know, you have to be like the statewide model for something, so it's, 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 just to understand that that's the same struggle we have with the rubric for our teachers, and I think that's important. I just want to say to you guys, there's going to be a year-two dip, I'm gonna, it's just the nature of a year-two in a job, and I think that, you know, I'm hoping to have a long tenure here, and I'm hoping that you help me through my second year, second year is in positions, if you know that you kind of come in, everyone's, you know, kind of like, "Okay, she's great, she's here," and then you kind of become real in year two, so I just would ask for the committee's support during that and understanding that there may be an opportunity, an, an experience where everyone's like, "What is she doing? And how did she handle that?" And I think, you know, it's easy to support superintendents when things are going well, I think the real work becomes supporting each other when it's not going as well, and so I think we just, I'm not going to purposely have a year-two dip, but I think the reality is...
Not a force at all.
Right, I just think that's important, and then the last thing is, I have an amazing team, and I, you know, Gillie and Jim have been just incredible supports to me, they've been supports to me in terms of learning the district, they've been in supports to me in terms of doing the work, you know, you talk about the budget, the budget never would have happened without Jim, I mean, the reason we had a good budget was that Jim did the work, the reason we have a five-year curriculum plan is that Gillie did the work, and I'm really excited to have a third member of that inner circle with Donna joining, I think that that becomes a wonderful division of responsibilities. Central office team, I've never worked with a more functional central, a group of people, this team is amazing. I realized that when we were doing the new teacher picnic, and we had a grill, and we had burgers, and we didn't know what we were doing, and the entire central office was out there making it happen, whether it was flipping burgers or setting up tables, or, it's just an amazing group of people that doesn't define, "This is my job," we just do it all here, and I feel so lucky to be part of the team, and the principals, great group of people supporting the teachers, and the teachers here work so hard for their kids, and, you know, I've said this a lot, but, you know, they work really hard to reach all twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids in their classroom, and there's a lot of places where teachers would say, "That's not doable," and in North Andover, they say, "We're going to make it happen," and I think it's just a really special community, so those are my reflections, I appreciate the time you took to do my evaluation, it is sort of strange for me to have my first evaluation on television, so you can imagine, you know, I ask anyone watching, yeah, go through that process, but, but, but I just really do appreciate your support, and I really appreciate you taking a chance with the high school principal, I feel so fortunate to have landed in this town, because it just feels right.
Great.
Thank you.
Been a very successful year, recharge, and let's, all cylinders next September.
Woo-hoo!
Good pep talk, good pep talk.
So with that, what I propose is, we vote to accept the, the summative evaluation report as presented, and if there are no modifications, we can each sign off on a copy of this and make that the official record, with the official artifact, is that reasonable?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this being the summative evaluation of Dr. Price for FY16, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstained, congratulations.
Thank you.
So a very successful year, thank you. We'll get a nice clean copy, we'll sign that next time. Great. I think the last item on our agenda for this evening is an update on the Educator Hall of Fame, if I didn't miss anything.
Yes, so, couple of things with this, and I would just like a little bit of, I guess, clarity or direction from the committee on this, so we have received, nominations have been closed now, I think they closed on the fifteenth of the month, we have received more than one applicant, and so they're, they're fantastic, and the process for going through this is that it is a subcommittee consisting of myself, along with one other member of the school committee, so I am not exactly positive... So I am not exactly positive. I know that we have spent some time kind of looking over some of them. But in terms of making a final recommendation to the committee or perhaps a panel of finalists within that, what is the consensus for that in terms of kind of doing that? And the reason why I bring this up is, you know, if I, I feel very awkward presenting to the committee and to the community three finalists and then having to vote for one of the three, you know, like, three, four, five finalists, whatever. So I guess I'm looking, the policy on what we do with that is not specifically clear. And so before I bring anybody's name public, and I think our next meeting is the second, so about 10 days or so.
A week.
A week, yeah, a week. Oh, my goodness. How would you like me to proceed with that?
Well, do we just point another person to the subcommittee?
Well, so as chair, I think I would make the appointee. And I would propose that you and I make the, make the decision, and we would bring forth one name.
Okay.
It says here, though, limited to a maximum of one award per year, except for the first two years.
Correct.
After the first year.
Yep. And so you certainly weren't here, but two years ago, we actually brought forward two. We had two fantastic members that were selected. And we made the decision to not do a nomination or to not do a Hall of Fame recipient last year in 2015. So we'd be back on cycle for one person kind of moving forward. So, but I just wanted to kind of get some clarity because I don't want to, I certainly don't want to bring forward five names and then say, "Well, we're only going to vote on one." You know, that's not.
You're just the opportunity to have two in the queue for subsequent years, right?
There you go.
But the reality is, so you two are going to the subcommittee? You're going to judge on the subcommittee?
That's a proposal, yes.
And we're not going to see the other finalists. So you're going to bring back one person's name, and we're going to say yes. No one's going to say no.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I think it's, it's worth some conversation because I, you know, I feel like it's an odd process. And I'll just.
Well, I think you've started to allude to it.
Why? You know, it's, and the other challenge that I have, to be perfectly honest, I didn't grow up in North Andover. These are not teachers or educators that I knew. So I'm going solely off of recommendations, and that's where we are.
That's fair. And that also might be a good objective criteria to evaluate what others are saying compared to your own personal, my own personal biases, if my children didn't have any of the teachers that are being proposed either.
Yep. And they're all fantastic. I mean, I can't.
No question about that. And that's what makes this both a significant honor, but also a very difficult process when you have very well-qualified and good recognition candidates.
I guess my point is, this is not a school committee decision. This would be a, a subcommittee decision. You're going to bring forth one, one person's name, and we don't really, the three of us, we don't weigh it on.
That's the challenge with it.
Yeah.
And so I'm, that's why I'm looking for.
So I would say you should bring, bring three people forward, and we should, I mean, I'm sure, you know, not everyone wins. You know, I mean, not everyone's, I don't, I don't know. My feeling is that if you don't do that, then the three of us don't understand.
So, and I agree. And that, that's why I wanted to have this conversation. You know, it's interesting because the, the selection process says that myself and one other member bring forward a recommendation, and then it says later, "A minimum of four votes is required for final selection." So.
Why can't we read them? I mean, is there, just because that's the way it's written?
So let me, let me ask Mr. Lepford, who was here when the Hall of Fame process started. What was the thinking initially on?
Well, initially, it was, it was an initiative created around a single individual. It was going to be honored, right? So it wasn't like there were going to be a bunch of people submitting, blah, blah. The procedure came afterwards, right? So it started with a very focused idea, which was a school committee person had somebody that they wanted to honor and needed this approach to do that. And so there wasn't a competition, there wasn't submissions and reviews and all of that. So that's the way it got started. And then over time, it's been evolving into this. I think the question really is the point that you raised at the beginning, Mr. McDevitt, which is, I mean, we can certainly have a discussion about whoever submits, but, you know, what would that discussion sound like?
Right.
Can I ask, just totally new to this, is there any way to give the nominations to all five school committee members to, to review individually and then submit their thoughts to the two, the two folks on the subcommittee who then come forward with the recommendation?
The only challenge with that is.
It's ridiculous.
No, it, it.
No, but those are meetings, I'm sorry.
It, it just becomes public record, right? So then if somebody were to ask for that documentation of who they are, I mean, and I don't want to exclude anybody, right? But it is a nomination process. But I, I agree with Mr. Terese. If Mr. Gross and I sit down, and then it becomes a selection of two people, not the committee, and then we're going to present one person to then come forward. So there's a flaw in the process, and I don't.
I don't see it as a flaw. I'd say if you get nominated, that's, that's a great honor in and of itself. And just because you're not chosen to be in the hall this year, I mean, the Hall of Fames, the Athletic Hall of Fames, people get nominated, they come close to getting in, it takes three or four times, and they get in. I don't, I don't think that you bring forth three or four names and us, you know, having a conversation about that is in any way disrespectful to those people. I, I just don't see it, though. I think it's an honor to be nominated. I mean, there's going to be hundreds of teachers who have come through the North Andover school system over the years, and only, how many nominations, how many nominations do you have right now, or submissions?
More than one.
I have more than one.
Okay. So my point is, I, I think it's responsible of the, this committee, if you so choose to take that position, to bring forth a few names for us to discuss and debate or just to, to take with us. Do we have to vote on this next, next week?
We have, we have 60 days after the nomination. So in essence, by July 15.
Why can't, on, on June 2nd, you submit the three finalist names or the five finalist names, wherever it is, and then the next time, we, we take a vote on it? I mean, I'd be hap, I don't think it's disrespectful if you get nominated and then you don't get in. It's always next year, as it stands.
I thought, Mr. McDevitt, I brought up something else that's interesting. You, neither of you at this point probably know these people. Why can't there be other members of this subcommittee from the teaching community? If you think they'd all have a bias towards certain teachers, is that the risk? Or why can't more people weigh in on a smaller, like, make a subcommittee of more than two?
No, but I think that people would weigh in. If we released the list of three or four names, whatever it is, next week, and then, you know, I think you would get feedback from, from the public if they, if they really were passionate about this. We'd get emails saying, "Yeah, we think this is, this person's a good person for X, Y, and Z."
So if I could, this is not a community Hall of Fame. This is a school committee Hall of Fame.
Well, I know, but the input that you get, Brian, I completely understand what it is.
I appreciate that. And that's what the, that's why we have a rigorous process to bring forth a nomination. So people felt strongly that there were educators in the district over the years that met these criteria, as we've seen, more than, more than a couple have put in for nomination. So I would, I'm sorry, I would, I would propose that having an open dialogue about how this teacher is better than that teacher is not going to benefit and would dirty the purpose of the Hall of Fame. And I would propose that, so as not to, to create that animosity for other teachers who still may be teaching today, that we go forward with, we have, we have several excellent nominations, and we will bring forth a name. And then the committee can vote that name or choose to go for an alternative if there's a reason why that person.
How can we go for alternative? We don't have the, we're not going to have any alternative.
So can I, can I? Can I make a suggestion?
One moment, please. If one person was nominated, you'd have one name.
My understanding what you're suggesting right now is you two are going to come up with one name to present to us next week.
Correct.
Well, well.
I don't, I don't want an alternative jump in to that.
Let me pause for a quick second because I think I can maybe, I, I think if we present all of the candidates with a recommendation of the selection or the nomination, and then have that person be voted on, I think, according to the policy, we're announcing who the, the nominations received are and who the recommendation is. In the past, the committee has not wanted to share who was not being selected. And that's why I kind of wanted to have a little bit of this conversation. So I'm okay with it. I just, I don't want to come to a meeting and say, "Let's talk about teacher one, two, and three," or educator one, two, and three, and then vote against or for. That's not the goal.
I just don't think people, I'll speak myself, I'm not, this is not going to be a compare and contrast thing about who was better, who wasn't better. I think some people may just stand out above other people. And, you know, we can just make that decision ourselves. But if you two choose to make a decision, I don't, it's not a school committee decision.
It's not. And that, and that's why I wanted to have the conversation.
Thank you. But if you brought, so let's say there are more than one submission, right? And you bring them to the committee. I think I would strongly recommend that it, that it would be a vote by us without any discussion. We would get paper. We could review paper. We could review whatever documents you got. But there would be no discussion or meeting. We would just vote.
So can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
That the nominations that I have.
Yep.
I will scan them.
Yep.
Distribute them to the committee.
Yep.
If Mr. Gross appoints himself and me to the subcommittee, we will make a recommendation.
From that group.
From that group.
Yep.
And then it would go to committee vote.
Yep. Without discussion.
Without discussion. And it could be whoever is recommended, or it could be another person on the list. But, but the, the process is a little weird, and I, I don't want to announce who they are without everybody's permission to do that.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess as long as we don't have a discussion about that, we can announce the list.
Okay. So I will scan them for the committee either tonight or tomorrow. And then Mr. Gross and I will.